Let me, let me call this meeting to order. It's the August ninth, twenty sixteen, school board meeting. It is past six thirty. Determination if we have a quorum. Mister Dicky Gonzalez.
President.
Doctor Norberto Cantú.
Present.
Miss Judy Solis. Mister Benito Sainz.
Present.
And myself, our president, Mister Ramirez, and Mister Klein are absent. We do have a quorum. The pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes for the regular board meeting of July twenty sixth, twenty sixteen. Do we have a motion for approval of minutes?
I so move.
We have a motion by Miss Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mister Sainz. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, public forum. Item one, consider and take possible action on agreement between servicing children and adolescents in need, incorporated Scan and RGCC ISD for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year.
Mister Board President, members of the board, Mister Garcia Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen. The purpose of the agreement to Scan a nonprofit corporation is to serve the needs of at-risk children and youth using drugs or alcohol, and has a coalition to address countywide substance abuse prevention. Programs provided by Scan are worthwhile and vital services for the students of RGCC ISD. A compensation for services, the Regranti City CID will provide Scan with the office pay and utilities. There's an in-kind value of about eighteen thousand dollars. You have a, a separate document there that was added because one of the board members asked for the attachment on Exhibit A, and that you were handed that out. And that just articulates the, the exhibit. The administration recommends approval. It's a renewal, Mister President, and we just recommend approval over the agreement between RGCC ISD and Scan.
Alright, do we have any discussion, item one? We have a motion, item one.
I so move.
We have a motion by Mister Sainz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Miss Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item two, consider and take possible action on agreement between Immaculate Conception School and RGCC ISD to provide free food services for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year.
This agreement is between Regranti City CID and Immaculate Conception School to provide food services for the provision of meals as outlined in, in the agreement. The Regranti City CID Child Nutrition Program claims all program meals for reimbursement. Basically, it had the word in there that said free, but we get reimbursement, so it's just a technical there. But it's from the food service. I want to just clarify that. And of course, we recommend approval. It's just a renewal with the, with Immaculate Conception School.
We have a motion, item two?
Just a question, Mister. Just a comment. In reading that, it said there that the cashier was responsible for collecting money, and I think you said that that was because sometimes they sell in addition to what?
This is just to clarify, yes. When, when you come to a cashier being provided, she takes care of any additional requests from a staff member, a paraprofessional, a student. If they want something extra other than the meal that is served, they pay for it. It's gotta be paid.
And that's what they do?
Yes, sir.
I move, Mister Chairman.
Am I correct with that, Pat?
We have a motion by Mister Sainz. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Mister Gonzalez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item three, consider and take possible action on property casualty insurance and workers' compensation renewal for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year.
Attached are the renewal proposal for the sixteen, seventeen property casualty and workman comp insurance renewals with Shepherd Walton King. You can see two number, agenda items there on number three, and again, that's just, just for information purposes. There's two because one deals with the regular liability and the other one is the workman comp, but it's the same vendor, and I wanted to clarify that also. We do recommend the renewal. They've done a great job for us, so we recommend the approval.
Do we have a motion, item three?
Some move, Mister Chairman.
We have a motion by Mister Sainz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Doctor Cantú. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item four, consider and take possible action on proposed tax rate that will be published in the notice for the public meeting.
The proposed tax rates to be published in the notice for the public meeting are as follows. The proposed rate for maintenance operation is one seventeen. An interest and sinking fund is zero point two eight one four zero, which totals to one point four five one four zero. Last year's rate was one seventeen again, with a zero point two six eight four, and with a total of one point four three eight four. The proposed tax rate is to be published on August the tenth, two thousand sixteen, in the town prior. And the public meeting date will be on August the twenty third of two thousand sixteen. We recommend approval for it to be published.
A motion, item four?
I so move, Mister Chairman.
We have a motion by Mister Sainz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Miss Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item five, consider and take possible action on order calling for the November eighth, twenty sixteen school board election.
I think you have a separate document for that, Mister President. I'll just go ahead and read it. Section three, zero zero five of the Texan Election Code requires that an order of election be filed not later than seventy-eight day before the election date. To comply with this requirement, attached is the order of election for the November eighth, two thousand sixteen, school board of trustees election. The election is for the purpose of electing to the school board of trustees of Regranti City's independent school district. Four trustees that pertain to place one, place two, place four, and place five. The administration recommends the order of the election for November the eighth, two thousand sixteen, school board of trustees election to be approved as presented.
Motion, item five?
I so move.
We have a motion by Miss Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Doctor Cantú. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item six, consider and take possible action on tax refunds for the month of July twenty sixteen.
Presented is a request for the approval of tax refund for July of two sixteen, two thousand sixteen. Refunds totaling two thousand two hundred fifty-seven twenty-eight being requested. Attached is the summary of the refunds. Administration recommends the approval of the refunds in the amount of two thousand two hundred fifty-seven twenty-eight.
Some move, Mister Chairman.
We have a motion on item six. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Mister Gonzalez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item seven, consider and take possible action on requisitions, five thousand and over in a twelve-month aggregate.
Thank you, Mister President, members of the board, Mister Garcia, and ladies and gentlemen. We do have a couple of requisitions for your consideration for approval of requisitions, five thousand dollars and over. Please forgive me for not being on that page yet, but...
It's on page forty-five.
Page forty-five, okay. Thank you very much.
There are two items there.
Yeah, there, there's two items, and there's proper funding available for these requests.
I so move, Mister Chairman.
We have a motion, item seven, by Mister Sainz. Do we have a second? We have a second by Doctor Cantú. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight, consider and take possible action on awarding of the following bids. Seventeen dash oh one, office and instructional supplies. Seventeen dash oh two, office furniture catalog bid. Seventeen dash oh three, classroom furniture catalog bid. Seventeen dash oh four, computer and copier paper. Seventeen dash oh six, medical supplies.
Thank you, Mister President, for your consideration. We do have, we're presenting these. Bid numbers seventeen oh one through seventeen oh three are catalog bids. Our recommendation is to award the bid to the companies that are, that are highlighted. They offer the best discounts on, for those supplies. And then, bid number seventeen oh four and seventeen oh six, our recommendation is to offer these based on an item-by-item basis, based on low bid.
Just a question, Mister Smithley.
Yes.
And all these bids, like, you all make sure that the lowest bid is the one that gets for each particular item. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. What we do, we, we have a threshold that the district uses, any requisition that, that may come in. We may ask for three quotes. You know, if there's, if there's small requests, you know, we, we allow the, the departments or the schools to order stuff, but if, if it's above a particular threshold, we, we will, we will require three quotes, and we'll make sure that we do get that.
The lowest.
Yes.
I so move, Mister Chairman.
We have a motion by Mister Sainz. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Mister Gonzalez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item nine, consider and take possible action on master's degree stipends for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year.
Thank you, Mister Smithley. Mister Board President, members of the board, Superintendent of Schools. Item nine, we are respectfully asking for revision to our master stipends specifically in the area of the content, and content defined as your pass out, we did define bilingual English, language arts, reading, history, math, science, and special education. The proposal before you, you see a two thousand dollar stipend for these content areas. Obviously, the other districts are investing in this, in these areas, so we're, we're finding it hard to retain individuals or teachers with these masters. We're looking at every other masters remaining at five hundred. This is for, obviously for content area as defined for teachers.
I would like to suggest that we consider tabling this motion because I don't quite agree with the amount. I believe that we need to be competitive. If we go with two thousand, we're, we're not gonna lure anybody back, or we're not gonna, you know, because other districts, neighboring districts pay more than that, so it's not an incentive, incentive to come back. I think we ought to do better than that, and so we need to study the effects of a different amount, and, and, and also to, we can have it ready for the beginning of school year, and we're working also with UTRGV and NM Kingsville and STC to come up with some proposals to be able to make it attractive enough for teachers and instructional assistants to want to get a higher degree. And, and so in combining all that together, I think, Mister Chairman, if it's in order, I'd like to table, move for table.
We have a motion by Mister Sainz. Do we have a second?
I, I would second that, and I think that we need to, to consider these things, and there's also other things that I think that we need to consider, such as things that we've talked about before, raising that tutorial rate, raising that summer school rate. You've talked about the UIL stipends, so I think that we need to see real numbers and see how much we can accommodate as far as master stipends, but also these other issues. So I would second that.
We have a second by Miss Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item ten, consider and take possible action on contracting Martha Morales Consulting for Staff Development Reading.
Good evening, Mister President, members of the board, Mister Garcia Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen. The curriculum department is here as we continue to make efforts to improve our students' scores for student assessment in the area of reading. It is critical to provide students and teachers with the tools necessary to be successful throughout the school year. Teachers, principals at six elementary campuses are requesting the training from Martha Morales Consulting to provide training in reading in the multiple disciplines. Phase one would include star integrated curriculum materials with a focus on comprehension, critical thinking, vocabulary development, and across, across the genres to include kinder through fifth grade. Phase two is a spotlight on star readers. Academic intervention methodology with a focus on differentiated instruction, customized academic planning and gathering will help differentiate the instruction for our students in level one, two, and threes. So the six elementary campuses are respectfully asking for approval this evening, and the total cost for this is fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty, and it's coming from the different campus budgets as presented there. We recommend approval. Mrs. Monique Verreal is the one, one of the lead principals that is requesting this for their campuses, and she's here to answer any questions.
I do have, at the committee meeting last week, we discussed that, and I didn't raise the question if it's good enough for, why only six elementaries if it's something that we want to go into? And, and your answer, your response was, I thought it was good, but I wanted to better hear it.
Yes, my response was, it was offered to all the elementaries. I did contact Martha Morales, and after I contacted Martha Morales, because I had a meeting with my teachers, I did contact all the elementaries, and the ones that wanted to participate went ahead and gave me their contact and how many slots they wanted. Also, in the last year, some of these elementaries have already gotten the training through Martha Morales.
That's why they did not participate?
Any other questions?
We have a motion on item ten. We have a motion by Mister Sainz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Miss Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eleven, consider...
Thank you.
Thank you. Consider and take possible action on ICE Station reading program for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, Mister Garcia Superintendent of Schools, ladies and gentlemen. The curriculum and instruction department is seeking approval of the ICE Station reading. The ICE Station reading delivers individualized instruction complete with age-appropriate content for students. Every lesson is supported with data-rich benchmarks and continuous progress, a monitoring assessment through ISIP, which is the ICE Station's indicators of progress. The curriculum focuses on a research-based skills tailored for many levels of reading development. Research shows that ICE Station helps students grow in skills predictive of future reading success. ICE Station computer-based adaptive curriculum and assessment are research-based and aligned to individual state standards and common core state assessments.
Any discussion on item eleven?
No, I move it's approval, sir.
We have a motion by Mister Sainz. Do we have a second?
I would second.
We have a second by Miss Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item twelve, consider and take possible action on Texas State Billing Services Incorporated School Health and Related Services Administration Agreement for, for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, Mister Garcia and all that are present. Special Ed Department seeks the approval of Texas State Billing Services. It's a, helps us bill for Medicare for Sharps for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year. They also help us with our audit reports, our cost reports, and they provide different services to us such as training. At this time, we're seeking your approval.
Discussion, item twelve?
I move it's approval, Mister Chairman.
We have a motion by Mister Sainz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Miss Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item thirteen, consider and take possible action on Small Businesses Comp Service Agreement for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year.
Once again, Special Ed Department is seeking the approval of Small Business Computer Service Manage Agreement for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year. They provide file server, server equipment for us. We also are asking for the renewal of a license, and they also provide calendars for us for all the middle schools, and there we go ahead and have interactive calendars for all our arts in the middle schools.
We have a motion, item thirteen.
I so move, Mister Chairman.
We have a motion by Mister Sainz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Miss Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item fourteen, consider and take possible action on orientation and mobility services by Roberto Di Huerta Consultant for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year.
Yes, Special Ed Department is seeking the approval of Roberto Di Huerta to provide orientation and mobility services for our students for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year. Mrs., Mister Orta has been working with the district for numerous number of years.
We have a motion in item fourteen?
I so move, Mister Chairman.
We have a motion by Mister Sainz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Miss Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item fifteen, consider and take possible action on visually impaired services by Nilda Cantú, the fourth consultant for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year.
Special Ed Department is seeking the approval of Nilda Cantú, consultant to provide services for VI students for the sixteen, seventeen school year.
We have a motion, item fifteen?
I so move, Mister Chairman.
We have a motion by Mister Sainz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Miss Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item sixteen, consider and take possible, possible action on speech pathologist supervision services stipends for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year.
Yes, sir. Special Ed Department is seeking the approval of awarding stipends to our speech pathologists. We have been providing stipends for a number of years. We're looking at five thousand dollars for everyone they supervise. At the present time, we have five individuals that need to be supervised under the licenses of the different pathologists.
This is just a continuation, right?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
I so move, Mister Chairman.
We have a motion by Mister Sainz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Miss Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item seventeen, consider and take possible action on Herman Method Program, Dyslexic Program for Elementary for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year.
Good evening, Mister Board President, Mister Garcia Superintendent, board members and community members. The Herman Method is a successful, small-group reading intervention program for our struggling students. It incorporates the latest research in reading for teaching in small groups. It provides instruction in phonemic awareness, in phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehensive skills. The Dyslexia Department is requesting approval for our dyslexia students at our elementary campus to utilize this program. The cost is, for the program to be implemented at the elementary schools is twenty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventeen cents. Pending availability of funds, funding is available through the SCE funds. We recommend approval from this, for this particular program.
And there's an, an added sheet with the correct information. I so move, Mister Chairman.
We have a motion by Mister Sainz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Miss Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eighteen, thank you. Item eighteen, consider and take possible action on courses offered by the Career and Technology Educational, Education Department, Gruia High School and Rio High School through McAllen Career Institute for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year, welding one, two, and welding three.
Yes, good afternoon, Mister Board President, board members, and respective audience present. Career Technology Department would like to continue the House Bill Five endorsement under business and industry under welding. Our providers this year, with your permission, would like, would, I would like to introduce McAllen Careers Institute. The owners are present, Mister Adame and Mister Salinas from McAllen. The welding classes that we would like to continue to offer is welding one, introduction to structural welding, welding two, structural welding, and welding three, wire welding. This is accordance to House Bill Five, and we will be using fund number two forty-four.
Miss Verreal, just a quick question. When students complete all these three courses, do they get some kind of certificate?
Yes, sir, they do. But it's very essential that they not only get the certificate, but that they pass a test, and that's what we want, because before the entity that we had, we had this, but we have to be successful in for them passing the certificate so that they could get a job. It's very essential right now, and there's a big market right now, as you've been reading the monitor, there's a big port in Brownsville, and there's a big job opportunity, and our students take advantage of this. But yes, they will be yielding several certificates, not only one.
I move its adoption, Mister Chairman.
We have a motion by Mister Sainz on item eighteen. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mister Gonzalez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item nineteen, consider and take possible action on dual concurrent enrollment courses for Rio High School through STC for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year, advanced precision manufacturing and welding career pathway.
Thank you, Mister Board President. Rio Grande City ISD has a donor enrollment instructor, Mister Robert, Robert Aberine, that has been teaching this class for the past ten years. It is a dual enrollment class through Career and Technology. As per House Bill Five, students will get an endorsement under business and industry under manufacturing, and it is only offered at Rio Grande City High School at this time. We're asking your permission to continue with this.
We have a motion by Mister Sainz. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mister Gonzalez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty, consider and take possible action on courses being offered by the Career and Technical Education Department for Gruia High School through UTRGV for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year Pharmacy Technician Program.
Thank you, Mister Board President. For the first time in a long time, we will be partnering for Rio, Rio Grande Valley Pan American, University of Texas, RGV. We're trying to acquire your permission to do the Pharmacy Technician Program at Gruia High School. The students, upon passing successfully, all the classes will be eligible to the state board to be a pharmacy technician, the same as Rio Grande City High School.
And there's a market for this, Miss?
Yes, sir, there's a big market, and actually, a lot of parents from Gruia, one in particular, you know, she's very adamant about it, because there is a pharmacy school now, as you well know, in Kingsville, and with this pharmacy tech, you know, they get to work with a pharmacist. It's a very difficult test to pass. The success rate is very difficult to acquire. I know that Mister Sainz, the, the principal from Rio Grande City, has, has helped me with that. We had a very good success rate this year, and we would like to continue this, you know, with the House Bill Five Public Service and Health Science at Gruia High School.
I so move, Mister Chairman.
We have a motion on item twenty. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Miss Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-one, consider and take possible action, courses being offered by the Career and Tech Education Department for Gruia High School through RGV Voltec for the twenty seventeen, twenty, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year, Nurse Assistant NA Program for the Body Technician Program, Certified Medical Administrative Assistant and Certified Medical Billing and Coding Specialist.
Thank you, Mister Board President. In order to prepare the high school students to be college and career-ready at Gruia High School, we would like to offer an agreement to continue with our first time with RGV Voltec to offer the following courses for Gruia High School. With your permission, grant fund number two forty-four will be utilized.
Motion.
I so move, Mister Chairman.
We have a motion by Mister Sainz. Do we have a second? We have a second by Miss Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-two, consider and take possible action on dual enrollment courses for Gruia High School through STC for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year.
Thank you, Mister Board President. Mister Board President, this is an existing teacher, and she would like to offer her classes as dual enrollment under the Megatronics Technology Certificate, and basically, it is a request to just change the entitlement of the course functions to be a dual enrollment, and it's just a recommendation to continue with her teaching, but for them to be dual enrollment at Gruia High School for STEM pathway.
She's a, she's a robotics sponsor, right?
She's an electronics engineer, yes.
I so move, Mister Chairman.
We have a motion by Mister Sainz on item twenty-two. We have a motion by Mr. Sines on item twenty-two. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-three, consider and take possible action on RGV Lead Service Agreement for the 2016-2017 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Board President. I would like a request to continue the service agreement to Rio Grande Valley Lead. This is an association where the counselors are also members of all the counselors and the current technology administration, where the students, upon graduation, get the tech prep cords. It is an honor for them. This past May, we had over a hundred at Rio Grande City High School. And of course, we're trying to increase the amount of tech prep graduates at Gruia High School. The teachers go through a rigorous curriculum that they have to take online so that the students can gain this. It is an honor, and they also provide staff development for the counselors. So there is a fee involved, and it will be funded through the Two Forty-four, Career and Technology.
Is that the six thousand two hundred and ten, that they cost?
Yes, sir.
And that, it comes out of CTE funds?
Yes, sir.
I move its approval, sir.
We have a motion on item twenty-three by Mr. Sines. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-four.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item twenty-four, consider and take possible action on Student Code of Conduct for the 2016-2017 school year.
Good evening, Mr. Garcia, Mr. Board President, members of the board, and community members. Substantive changes were made to the Student Code of Conduct to clarify legislative changes to the eighty-fourth legislature in regular session. This was not a legislative year, so the changes were very minimal, three to be accurate. The changes were mainly due to the language that was either changed or added. We ask for your approval.
Discussion, item twenty-four.
I move for its approval, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Sines. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
I want to thank the, Mr. Peña and all the curriculum department. I ask a lot of questions at the committee meetings as I normally do, but curriculum is very dear to my heart, having been involved in education all my life. And I want to thank all the, all the presenters at the committee meeting, because they're very knowledgeable, and they know, I have a lot of questions, and they're ready to answer them. So thank you very much for that. Oh, sorry, I have another one.
You have an addendum from the curriculum department. One of the required actions, as indicated by the Texas Education Agency, is for us to research and evaluate an instructional model and determine a district-wide approach to teaching. As the district begins the process of selecting an instructional model for the district, we would like to provide training on the five E model to begin the process. The district is requesting approval to train a group of forty teachers on Friday at the Ace Elementary Campus. The training would be provided by Region One, and it would be provided to science teachers in elementary and middle school at that particular level to begin the process. And eventually, we will train on the other content areas. The funding is twelve hundred dollars pending availability of funds. It is available through Fund Two Fifty-five. We recommend approval.
Do we have any discussion on the addendum?
Yes, I saw movement.
We have a motion on the item of addendum. Do we have a second?
I would second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything on reports? It is now seven oh nine. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, under information, item number one, sir. The Rio Grande City Curriculum Department has the student handbooks here present for you for information this evening. They have been reviewed by the elementary, middle school, and high school campus administrators, and they have several recommendations. This evening, we provided an update of the changes for you. The first section are the elementary changes that are minor. Section two is the middle school, minor changes as well. And section three, you'll find the high school. We had discussion at the committee meeting, you know, last week, and then we met on Monday again with Mr. Sines and discussed it in more detail with all the different principals of high school.
We had about a three-hour discussion on Monday, follow-up of the last week's meeting, but it was good. Let me tell you, the discussion was excellent, because we allowed, I think, everybody to express how they felt about the different things, and there's still some areas that we probably need to discuss further. But I, again, I thank all of you and your staff, Mr. Peña, because you all put a lot of time and effort in it, and I ask a lot of questions all the time, and so, yeah, you all are ready to answer, and I appreciate that very much.
You're welcome, sir. Any questions?
No, it's just information. Thank you, Mr. Peña. It is now seven eleven. What, item, item two?
Yes, as required by law, the school district tax collector must certify to the governing body two items. Number one, the estimated debt collection rate for 2016. And number two, the excess debt tax collection for 2015. Attached is a certification of anticipated debt collection submitted by the district tax assessor-collector, Laura Garcia. The certified collection for the rate for 2016 will be ninety-six percent, number one, and the excess debt collection for 2015 will be, were sixteen thousand one hundred and two eighty-two. This estimate equals the total tax dollars collected for the current debt taxes, delinquent taxes, special appraisal, rollback taxes, penalties, interest, and additional penalties for attorney fees. We recommend approval.
Did we need approval for it?
No, it's just a report.
It's just a report.
No approval needed?
No, you can't take actions, just as a report.
Okay.
Any discussion?
You just need to be presented.
Yes. Okay. Anything else on reports and information?
Yes, one more, yes, sir. We got several more. On July twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, as required by law, the chief appraiser of Starr County provided RGCCID with the certified tax values for 2016. These values will be used to generate our tax levy for sixteen seventeen school year. When compared to the last certified values, an increase of fifteen point zero nine is noted. Mineral values increased by twenty-seven point ninety-eight percent. Real estate values increased by one point fifty-three. Attached is a copy of the certified values as certified by the tax appraiser. This is being presented for information purposes and does not require board action, but just for information.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, sir, we got several more. The Tax Office Collection Report for the month of July two thousand sixteen is attached to your review. The report provides you with the collections for the current month as well as the year to date basis. We had collections for the MNO of seventy-seven thousand nine fifty-three forty-seven, current ninety-six thousand one oh two fifty-seven delinquent and one hundred and seventeen two sixty-one ninety-nine penalty and interest. Other collections totaled fifty-one thousand one sixty-nine eighty-eight. We had a grand total of three hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-seven ninety-one. Again, it's just presented for information purposes. And then the next one is the budget balances, I think we reviewed already. And the next one, I believe, number six, is the check register. Thank you.
Thank you. It is now seven fourteen. Under the authority of the Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one point oh seven-one, we'll be heading into closed session. I reconvene, open session. It is seven forty-three. We have a motion, item A.
We approve item A, it's discussing closed session.
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Sines. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Do we have a motion, item B?
I saw move.
We have a motion by Mr. Sines on item B. Do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item C, discuss, do we have a motion, item C?
I move that we approve as discussed in executive, as presented in executive.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Sines. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Do we have a motion, item D?
On item D, I move that we approve as presented in executive and also pending formalization.
Do we have a motion by Ms. Solis? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Sines. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
I make the same motion for item E, as presented and pending formalization.
We have a motion on item E by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Sines. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item F, do we have a motion, item F?
I move to approve as presented in executive.
We have a motion, item F. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have a motion on item G.
I move that we, approve as presented.
We have a motion on item G by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Sines. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item H, do we have a motion on item H?
I move that we approve the item as presented in executive.
We have a motion, item H. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Sines. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It is now seven forty-five. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
I saw move.
We have a second.